So what we'll do, we'll ask finance over first, all right, Karen? Is that our, or John? Sorry. John will go first, so that Mr. Riege has a little version.
If you want to do public service utilities for the votes for Judge Guido, I'm on that committee.
Oh, you are on that committee?
Yes. You might as well just do it.
All right, so why would you that? Is that all right? We'll go public service utilities first, then we'll work from bottom up. Is that all right with everybody? Because again, Mr. Riege's live at 6:15. He has a church meeting. We're going to ask him to be treasurer.
Okay. I'll call for the public service and utilities.
Yes.
You said?
Thank you. One item up here, ceremonial resolution has to be on the Judge Loyola retiring bench. So we're looking to do a resolution.
I'll do that part.
From here.
I'll do that part.
I know, I know. And Carl Feltego said he would get the information for us regarding that. So he's contacting his clerk tomorrow as well to see if there is a reception for him the following Tuesday, the 10th. So it's a question of whether or not the mayor's going to be presenting anything to the judge himself on that 10th reception. If not, then we'll present our resolution on the 10th and flip it around. Gary's doing something on the 10th, and we're going to put it out on the 9th for our Monday meeting. Okay? So that confuse the heck out of yous?
No.
I'm sure by Thursday. Carl's going to call tomorrow, so I, but we'll let everybody know. We'll send an email or something like that.
All right.
Okay, that's.
Any questions?
That is it.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
I'll go in favor.
Aye.
So anything else to come before for our public service and utilities?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned, thank you.
Call the Lord of the Finance Committee. The first item is a call for a public hearing for the Upper Union Street bid 2020 budget. It's a call for a public. Sorry. Second item is discussion. Oh, yeah. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye. Did we get a budget or anything from the events?
Not yet. They're going to have a public hearing, and then they're going to argue this the budget.
And then we'll come back.
It's the same thing as the DSIC.
Well, how can we add a public hearing without a budget now?
Well, it's still.
No, we're calling for the public hearing, but before the public hearing, you're going to get.
It's still pretty slow. It's another cycle. Can't be until Jan.
Well, we're trying to do the.
Oh, that's right, the same, the same night.
Same night, right, right.
Okay. All right.
Second item is council approval for contract acceptance relating to smart cities initiatives. A discussion. Mr. Riege, you'd like to start?
Yeah, I think we talked about it, we know what it's about, and I think it's a good idea if the city council has some rules on about, you know, how the smart cities money is being spent since we've kind of been in the dark up to now, no pun intended, in smart cities. I think it's a good idea if you want to put a dollar figure on it, trying to do a certain amount, depending on where the council feels, but I think it's something we should do since there's a lot of money on there, we should, so, city council should have some oversight.
Is there any comments? Ms. Peraza?
Just that I agree, wholeheartedly. I mean, when it gets into the capital budget, we have, we don't really have much oversight. And there's some pretty big decisions being made, big dollar amounts, and I think as the checks and balances of the taxpayers' money, we should have some knowledge.
Ms. Kocian.
Yep. I guess what we were talking about is possibly setting a dollar amount on it as well, but I think I'd like to include services, services, because I want to understand most of this stuff is contracted out, services. And correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be $35,000 is the, the number that we use as a threshold?
Yes.
So if we kind of maybe use that as some kind of a threshold for this as well, any services or purchases over $35,000?
No, it's 35.
Yeah. Yeah. Use that as a threshold moving forward to come before the council. And be more than that.
Any other comments?
I have a question. So when, maybe, I don't know, does anybody here can answer it? So when they're contracting out, does it have to go through the same process, the same bidding process as all of the other, any other contracts for the city as far, as far as smart cities go? It's not just a commission that, or the advisory board that the mayor's put together that does that?
No, the bidding process and the whole, the whole line yard.
Is the same as the rest of the city? Okay. Thank you.
And right now, we don't have oversight of services, right, in the regular budget? So this would add that.
Correct.
Professional services.
Yeah, I think it's just as for discussion, all the, Mr. Promani, as we all know, the mayor's not here this evening because he's at a smart cities presentation at the Mount Pleasant Library. So he asked that if we, you know, get our discussion, get some ideas, as so did, I talked with Corporation Council, Feltego as well, just to get the conversation going so we have an idea of what we're looking to do, set that threshold, and then let the mayor on the 22nd, whatever that is, 21st, whatever that date is, bring it back to committee then to really finalize and put it to a vote.
Is it 23rd?
23rd. Is there a statement? Yeah, it is. Yep, 22nd or 23rd.
23rd.
Yes.
Anything further? Okay, next item is discussion on council approval for contract acceptance or change orders of a certain amount with Mr. Mudavaren.
Yeah, we had discussed this a few weeks ago, and we had, you know, proposed that when contracts comes before us, we approve them. But if there's any change order, we don't get any information regards to any change order. So we're looking at if it's possible for all the change orders, if there are any, for any contract that we approve, should come back to us for review. Should we set a dollar amount, or should we bring back all to us for review and approval before we just push any change orders from the.
I would say only if it increases.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, a change order. If it's going to increase the contract to a higher value, it should come back to us because we approve it for X amount. And why shouldn't we not be able to look at what the bidding is trying to control a bidding because someone can bid low just to get the contract, and then they started to, to push change orders through, whereas someone bid the correct price and they just fall off. So that is something, and then we talk about, and this is the other item, I kind of like coincide with each other, we talk about the procurement policies up for expire in January. We have to renew it. So we kind of look at policy where we can put that into the procurement policy and kind of have that as a guideline for all contracts going forward.
Ms. Lucy.
I just agree. As long as they're staying within budget, I think it's fine, but if anytime they go over budget with a change order, it should come back.
So my question was, I thought it did come back to if it went over budget. If there's a, if, if there's a certain, I mean, I'm assuming it's 10% over budget, does it come back to us if we need approval?
I don't think it does.
No?
No.
Okay.
As a comment, I believe under the state and local law requirements, at 15%, it has to come back for reapproval or rebid.
Okay, so I, I was thinking it was 10. It's 15. Okay.
Ms. Porterfield.
So I just want to clarify, the, you said in response to Karen's question that if it goes over budget, we say we're going to, it's $50,000, and it goes, it goes over to $55,000, you're saying that it doesn't come back here?
No, not only according to. Smarting that's 15%.
So if there's a, there's a percentage that's usually built in as far as, that can go above and beyond the budgeted amount. I thought it was 10, but he's telling me it's 15.
Okay, because the mayor clearly said it's something different when he was sitting here, that if it was within, if we said $50,000, if they came in, even if they bid lower, but it got up to $50,000 after they changed orders, it would not come back to us. But when over $50,000, using that as an example, it would come back to us. That is what he clearly said.
That's what exactly we're talking about, is that.
Well, should we verify? We'll verify this information. We'll make sure that you have an answer. We'll take a look at it. This is up for discussion, so there's no pending legislation right now. So we'll give you an answer before you even get to that point. And I'll clarify my point. It's a requirement to reapprove or rebid at 50% change from the bid price. So if they're at 40, and they go up to 50, that may be reapproval, it doesn't matter what the budget was. Where, so maybe it will, we'll investigate regarding budget versus bid price.
So just to, my understanding is somebody bids 40, and they come in, and they say, okay, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be 44, it's within that 10%, but the budgeted amount was 50. They're still under the budgeted amount, but they're beyond what their budget acceptance was. So my understanding, what you want to get done is you want to make sure that that doesn't happen, that we understand. So there is, you're telling me it's 15%? I thought it was 10% if there's something 10% above, beyond what is an accepted bid price. So at this point, whatever, if there, if it's above and beyond, no matter what, it's going to come back to the council is what the recommendation is. Okay.
And that's what the discussion is centered around, because most of the time, you want to control and to protect the bidding process.
Yes.
That someone is not bidding low just to get the contract, and then they started to ramp up change orders. By us not having a threshold, we don't get to see it. So we don't know at the end of the day how much this contract actually costs us.
Ms. Porterfield.
The last discussion I asked, and that we get to see at least the last year, is how, how we're doing in this process. So I haven't seen anything yet in terms of have we done this? How many times have we had change orders? So I mean, that, we need something to, I feel like, to look at to, to know what we're, you know, if, if this is even a problem. It may not be. We don't know yet.
Ms. Peraza.
And just, I mean, 10% or 15% doesn't seem like much, but we, we approved some pretty hefty bids, and that's not pocket change, you know, when we're talking millions of dollars.
And you'd like to do this within the procurement policy as a.
Yeah, Mr. Feltego had mentioned that it's up for renewal, so we want to coincide that and also, he was supposed to actually email us this policy.
The last procurement policy?
Yes, and just have a look at it.
Okay.
And come up with any suggestions to change, or do I, you know, whatever we need to, and kind of put that in as a draft, circulate it, and let's come back with more information.
So we're going to also get the information on any, on the last year change order of bids?
Yep, I have that in here. So we'll get the historic change order information too, and we'll email out the last procurement policy so that you have it, so you can view it. And hopefully that will also trust when contracts come back to the council. We'll, we'll take a look at it. And if it's not in there, we'll, we'll let you know exactly what that says.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to open city planning and development, and we have no one here from.
It's me. Well, it's all returns.
Okay.
Yeah.
So first item on the agenda is Strong Street.
For 10th of 25th, Strong Street, there were two issues we wanted to address regarding what's already been done to date. One is a correction in the change of zoning. What was put forth the council the other day was R1 to C2, and it actually needs to be R1 to C5. The other is that in connection with the C5 distinction, we need to comply with the SECA requirements for environmental review. So we're looking to have the city appointed to conduct the environmental review, do unfortunately another round of a quick public hearing on it, and resubmit for a C5.
Questions? Ms. Peraza?
I know there were some issues with, we didn't talk outside or something. Is that, do you know the status of that at this point?
I've not seen any since our last meeting. So.
So what is, we were, it was C2 before, now we need to go to C5. So from what I read, is it, are they saying all the businesses that are currently surrounding it, the Speedway, the Sweat &amp; Sweat, those are all C5s? Is that?
The Speedway is C5, that's what they're mirroring. The C2 that got approved was actually my error. One of the prior, some of the prior documents originally drafted were C2, and planning and zoning changed it to, or planning and zoning changed it to C5. However, when I drafted the resolution, I didn't have that changed in the documentation. I had to throw in the resolution. So that was my error. It should never have been approved.
Should have always been for C5 instead of.
But we did this in December of 2018, is what the information I received, and we're here. So.
10th of March, I believe, that passed.
Yeah, but initially, they, the, initially it said was 2018.
Correct. The original application for the zoning change back in 2008.
And then it was C2.
Correct. And it was the city that chose to change it to C5 based on the neighboring commercial businesses.
That's where they presented.
Yeah, I know when we had the presentation, but I don't, but I don't, this is the first time I'm hearing that other businesses. I guess it's a little, I'm not really clear on how we didn't know the other businesses were C5 when we were doing this, and we wanted that to be C2. So I guess that, that seems a little confusing that the zoning and planning didn't realize that businesses are J fit with C5 versus C2 when we were doing that.
Probably an oversight.
I could definitely get clarification to you on that.
Yeah, and I'll, like, there's a restaurant, then there's Speedway, and then Sweat &amp; Sweat, I think, are the only three businesses that are still existing that are J fit.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is authorization to issuance of revocable permit, Mad Jack Brewing, for a sign and auditing that will overpay the city's right away at 2:30 seven Union.
And if you look in your package, you'll see material, a sample, with a photograph of the Mad Jack and Van Dyke sign, the restaurant, which is to hang on the side of the building right away.
Want to hear any questions?
No. Sorry.
That's okay. Got you.
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the authorization in issuance of a revocable permit for 644 to Emily Wiley Foundation for the installation of Little Libraries to select city parks.
For this item, the Emily Wiley Foundation has submitted a request to the city that they be allowed to install Little Libraries, which are essentially the size of large birdhouses or airlockes, with a glass door on it, or books to be taken or returned until that is needed.
We have them throughout the city already, so.
Yeah, they're looking to add some more.
Okay. Any questions? Yes.
This is part of the Thriving Neighborhoods Challenge, right?
I don't really.
Yes, it is.
And this is just a minor point, but if we're having oversight on them, we should make sure that it's plexiglass, not glass, because they're in the parks and they can get.
I think they are plexiglass.
Yeah, well, just to be specific, I think we should be specific in our instructions to her, this is glass in these parks.
Do we have a list of the parks that she's putting in?
Yes, on page three of her. Still, Congress Street, there's a lot of them. Hampton Webster, Jerry Gurrell, Simon, Delta Park, three, and Cecil Park.
Yeah, there were a few going.
Little on Vale.
Which one?
It'll be, it's all eight parks and 10 libraries. Mr. Mudavaren.
Do, do we have the insurance policies at this?
Yes, she's provided, Atlantic Mary, cop proof of insurance at a million general, I believe, with like $2 million access.
Can you have a copy for us, please?
I will get a copy before Monday.
I'll move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the adoption of the historic Stockade District Conferences, Streetscape Plan, and it's, this is a public hearing? Okay. Call for public.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is parking garage code change.
Can we just go back to that? The reason why, can one of you two explain the reason why we're calling for the public hearing on this plan?
Yes.
I think it's important that everybody is watching, to understand what we're doing.
The historic Stockade Streetscape Plan that has been developed by the Stockade Association was proposed to this body that, that was the mayor's office, it be incorporated into the city plan, and necessary code changes for the Stockade District to also be added to the city code. Both of those changes require a public hearing and review for both the city plan under the New York State General Law, and for code changes, obviously require a public review prior to approval by this body for any code changes. So the public hearing is intended to cover both of those items.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the parking garage code change?
New York State, back in 2018, passed some additional state level changes requiring on all cities, towns, and municipalities that have, and any building codes to incorporate new language regarding parking garages, so that they are now required to have operating permits, as well as meet certain new levels of annual inspections. Both of those, we have draft code changes for those. We just need to hold a public hearing and go through the necessary process, and I believe it's on for consideration for a public hearing and vote at the same time, so we can get it passed, as we're actually a little delayed. The state law changes were meant to be effective as of October 1st of this year.
So, Ms. Kocian.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say clarification here, so we're doing a public hearing and passing it at the same time?
That is the proposal. This is due a public hearing. As, as, the language as proposed is set forth, but the state's provided the draft code language so that there's not much variation to be reviewed. And honestly, I don't expect too much public concern as this pertains to public protection or maintenance of parking garages.
No, I'm just, just clarifying.
Yep, understood.
So is this new to us, for the city, inspecting these parking garages?
Yes.
Brand new, so we've never inspected any of our garages prior to this legislation coming to us.
Not explicitly, well, to be clear, not explicitly for the purpose set forth in the new legislation. That's not to say we haven't gone out and just looked at parking garages on their own as standing structures. But now the, the state law explicitly says that parking garages must be inspected.
All right, and it says a permit has to be issued. Are there any permits currently issued for these parking garages?
No.
So have we set a fee for this, or what do we look, I mean, the permits aren't going to be free, I'm assuming, correct? Nothing's free from the city anymore, but.
While the department is currently working with code and with engineering to determine a cost schedule for that, that will incorporate into the permit, draft permit rules, primarily it's meant to cover the cost of the external engineering company that will be, have to be retained.
Okay, so that's my next question. So, so a few things I'd like to see is a list of all the parking garages that we have to say that think are going to be, that have to do this inspection?
It is all parking garages.
I understand, and I'd like to see how many we're talking about, and where their locations are. And the engineer that's going to be assigned to this, is this going to be a city employee, or is this a private company that's doing this?
It will most likely be a private company that will be doing it.
All right, because that's the way I'm reading it, it has to be a sealed inspection and come back, so.
It's next, it's a third party that is hired by the, the parking garage, that, the owner of the parking garage hires their own.
Not by us. So he can hire.
He can hire.
I'm sure they have.
So Shmo the engineer who goes out and.
But again, they have to have all the credentials, so I'm sure that are built.
And that, correct, and that doesn't prevent the city from doing follow-up if we think there are questions related, you know, related to the report that's issued. If we think that the report is, you know, there's a flaw in the report, that doesn't prevent the city from going out and doing its own inspection.
All right, so, and again, as I'm reading this, I'm sorry, all these questions, I did have these, so, the initial assessment to be completed before October 1st, and again, when they were constructed. Now, the other ones are 2020, 2021. Are we looking to get to these earlier than those expiration dates? Because we haven't been inspecting these before, or are we waiting until these dates come due, you know, to the year 2020, year 2021?
I think the way it's set up is, we're supposed to go out there and do an initial inspection as of, you know, as soon as possible, really, now.
We mean the city?
We meaning this, well, we mean, well, I did, let me take a step back. The garage owners are supposed to submit to the city their engineering reports, and the city can do follow-up as necessary related to those reports. And then subsequent reports have to be submitted on the basis of what the statute says. So they do an initial report, and then there are follow-up reports for subsequent years.
All right, I just got one more, Jim. So that should be part of the permit process, I would assume as well, right? Before we issue these permits to individuals, that we have some kind of an initial assessment from a qualified engineer, given to our, whatever department's going to issue these permits. Garage wasn't issuing the permit, just to making sure that things are where they should be, at least. But I'd really like to see these inspected well before the due dates.
There was an issue years ago at the main parking garage.
Right, I remember that, that's why I'm bringing this up.
An engineering issue.
Yeah, and some great stuff, so. Well, very good, so, those are the things I'm looking for before I do any, because I, quite honestly, I don't think I'm going to be comfortable doing public hearing and voting at the same time, I don't know. Let's see what we got, any.
Mr. Promani. I would like a date, follow-up on Mr. Kocian's comment of when the inspection reports will be sent to the city, whether that's, I don't know, thrown out date, March 1st or something. But this should be as his comment, well in advance, and I would like have us have a due date.
So back to the permits again, so is everybody going to have to get a permit right now, immediately, or do they wait until they're filing for this inspection process? I'd like to clarify that out as well.
The initial inspection conducted by the structural engineer is a prerequisite requirement before they can be issued a permit.
Right, so it's everybody, my question, is everybody given required to have a permit, regardless of their construction dates?
Correct. Prior to the issuance of the operating permit, every structure, every qualified structure will have to complete the initial assessment, even if their due date is not yet, yet, or currently. If they are going to get a permit, they have to have completed that structural assessment.
Is there a timeframe on that? So it was supposed to be done October 1st, and?
Based on age of structures. So structures older than 40 years old had to have their initial assessment completed by October 1st, 2008. Ellis, there are only two structures in the city that meet that age, Ellis Medical and MVP. Ellis has had the, on their older parking structure, it's over 40.
That's over 40?
They have the newer structure than they have the older structure.
Oh, okay.
So there are two parking garages, they're technically. Right, their older structure has already been reviewed, and we heard our discussions with the city regarding whether the city can get comfortable with the condition of the building up to issue an operating permit.
Okay.
As the building does have certain structural deficiencies. And the other is MVP, and MVP has been notified that their requirement to get the structural assessment done, and they are currently working on hiring an engineer to do the review of their building.
That building's not.
Actually, it is. Part of the parking structure, not the entire building, but part of their parking structure is that old.
Because they took that, yeah, back in.
Oh, okay, yes, I know, okay. Thank you.
Here's one I'm expecting, is that's the one I'm expecting, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Ms. Peraza?
What about the, um, the one attached to, um, senior housing, yeah, that, that'd be pretty old?
Any shape of it.
With the county building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, in Chino.
I, that is one of the older ones in the city, I'll double-check, I don't believe it's at the forty-year threshold, I believe it's in the thirties, but I'll double-check that.
As James mentioned, code enforcement's already been out there, Chris Lund's already been out there looking at these two older parking garages, um, so that they can, you know, essentially get their operating permits once, you know, they come to compliance with whatever they have to do.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, one more time, so, the permit fees have to be set by the council, or who just comes up with this number of fifty dollars, or two hundred dollars, two, who does that?
I thought it was going to be based on the engineering review, that was going to be the, the cost of permit.
And we would, and we would have to, what, what we've done in the past and worked to, worked toward is to change the code so that it says that the fees can be set by resolution, instead of having the fees in the code, because then every time we change the fees in the code, we have to have a public hearing, so...
Good point.
Yeah, well, second system, obviously, well, I mean, I think that's what we do, second system of what you've previously done, so that you can revisit it at a certain point in time, in case that has to be increased without going through the, the full-length process.
Ms. Peraza?
So, should we be calling for a public hearing and setting the fees, because it's going to be three weeks, right, so if we go another cycle, and it's going to be five weeks, do, do we think we could be ready to, to have the fees in place by then, or at, well, at least it's a change in the code saying that we set the fees by resolution?
Right.
Shouldn't we do that now?
I think we can, I, I don't see a problem with doing that now, I mean, if there, if there becomes a hiccup in, in going through that process, I'd rather, you know, us than pull, you know, have to recommend that the city council pull back and, and wait, but move ahead otherwise.
So, we're going to call for a public hearing to, to change the code, not to set the fee, though?
No, well, we, we're calling for a public hearing to change the code to say that the fees can be set by resolution.
Okay.
Instead of having the fees in the code itself.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move that.
We can change right now.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Do we need a separate call, do we need a separate call for a public hearing for the, um, garage code change?
That's what we...
Did we already vote on that?
No, that's what we were just talking about, that we need to have two public hearings.
Two public hearings, so one is going to be on the, on the garage code change, and the other is going to be on the permit fees.
Right, so I'll, I'll move the, the code change public hearing.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so there's, you got that, Andrew?
Yep.
Two public hearings.
No, Samantha, you have that, right? Okay, it's just he writes, he writes slow.
She writes logically, you can't read it slow.
Um, all right, so the, the last item on the agenda is the review of the D S A D budget, um, which I believe every, just was last, was last week, and, um, do we have any questions?
Trace, all right.
Okay.
Do you have the vote on?
We have, no, no, we don't vote on Monday night, okay.
I'll see to it, Jen.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Very interesting, circle that, we're going to check on...
How's that, Mr. Regu, you're all set?